Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Before we go into the budget presentation this evening, I want to make a couple of comments here. As you know, when we were coming out of the last grueling recession, the City Council made a strategic plan. We set out to make the city financially stable and financially resilient. And we've been doing that very successfully through a number of things that we've done. First of all, we adopted it as a strategic priority in our strategic plan. And we've been doing quite a lot of things to get there, including diversifying our economic base to generate more sales tax and generate more revenues from other sources such as transient occupancy taxes. This has worked well for us. That you can see, we've attracted a lot of new retail businesses here in the city of Norco. You look around since that 2009, we've built Floor &amp; Decor. We've had Hobby Lobby. We have the Lewis Retail Center on Corridon and River Road. We had Winkle Tractor Supplier and a lot of other businesses that we've built here in town. We also wanted to create Norco as a destination point. And we've been able to achieve that through SilverLakes, the development of SilverLakes, the improvements that we've made at Ingo's Equestrian Center. And that has actually attracted a lot of people into the city of Norco, leading to the construction of three new hotels since that recession ended back in 2009. So, in addition to obviously diversifying our revenue base, we have also tried to manage our expenditures. We did that by doing a lot of restructuring the organization, you know, and contracting out, starting with the fire department. We do a lot of contracting out and a lot of other departments here in the city and the programs here we offer the residents of Norco. That, of course, got us to where we thought we need to be. So, as we enter this current fiscal year, we are looking very good. I mean, with significant amount of money in reserves. And, of course, we have the situation that we're dealing with today, COVID-19, which came all of a sudden. And certainly, that is going to have a significant impact on our revenue for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year. The good news, of course, is that we are very prepared for it because of the wise decisions we made after we came out of that last recession. So, and of course, Measure R was part of the puzzle and that got us to where we are today. So, we are fully prepared for this. But hopefully, we hope it doesn't last for a long time. And but in the absence of that going longer than is anticipated, I think we're going to be fine here. So, with that, going into the budget, I do want to recognize all the staff members here present tonight. All of them have worked hard in putting together a budget that we are going to be reviewing this evening. Most importantly, to our new finance director, she has had to learn a lot in a very short period of time and do a lot in a very short period of time, especially with some of the staff shortfalls we have in the department. But she's done very well. With that, I'll go into the discussion. I want to go back to this picture. I think this is a very nice picture. It's about some of the things that make Norco unique, peoples and places here in Norco. The color of this operating budget here indicates this is just a preliminary budget. It's not a final budget. When we issue a final budget, the color will change. Kelly let me know that this afternoon. But anyway, again, the budget is like a puzzle. We're trying to constantly solving it. Although what is happening now, trying to solve that puzzle is going to become more difficult going down the road. So, so here's what we're going to do with this budget presentation. We're going to, although this budget is for FY '21, which is 2021 budget, we're going to take a look at where we are with respect to our FY 2019-2020 operating budget. We are going to talk about some of the key factors that are driving this fiscal year 2021 budget. And then we're going to go into a little bit more details with respect to the general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, and gas tax fund. And finally, if we don't get to it today, or we'll get to it, the next budget study session, which will be two weeks from today, we'll get into reviewing individual operating department division budgets. So, in terms of the FY 2019-2020 operating budget, when we are here at mid-year, that budget was essentially balanced. We had projected revenues of $21.7 million. And now, that revenue projection has gone down to $19.8 million. Our expenditures were projected to be $21.7 million, the same as revenues. The good news, though, is that our expenditures are trending lower than what we had anticipated. That we're now estimate that our total general fund revenues by the end of this fiscal year will be $21.1 million. So, with this situation, what that leads to is a $1.3 million deficit in the current fiscal year 2020 budget. Of course, that number would have been worse had it not been for, obviously, the fact that our expenditures are going to come in under what we anticipated. With that, the big things that are driving this projected deficit in the general fund, there were two actions that were actually taken by the governor to try to help retailers deal with the impact of COVID-19. One was a sales tax deferral, okay? This is where the governor allowed retailers to keep up to $50,000 of sales tax generated in fiscal year 2020 and pay it back in fiscal year 2021. The impact of that to us is this $333,299 in fiscal year 2020. The most significant item also that the governor did was to grant a 90-day extension to all those who generate sales tax that are less than $1 million. What that means, sales tax that are generated between January and March of 2020, the reports and the payments would have been due by April. The governor did allow retailers to, an extension to pay that sales tax. And those sales tax will be paid in July instead of April, when they should have been due. The impact of that is about $900,000 for the general fund. It also has an impact on Measure R. But the good news on that one is because that taxes, those taxes will be paid in July and we are able to account it as part of FY 2019-2020 budget year. Because for accounting purposes, there is an accrual period that is allowed. And so, you're not seeing that as part of this $1.3 million. Otherwise, it would have been worse. So, economic impact on sales tax is about $1.2 million, which is estimated, the impact from March to June. This is basically sales tax that would be lost because of the stay-at-home order and the fact that, obviously, business activity, especially retail activities, has significantly slowed. Some of the other things that are impacting our revenues for fiscal year 2020 is the rent deferral we granted to SilverLakes. The impact on that for this fiscal year is $151,000. Also, we have lowered our TOT projection. Even though we have WoodSpring that is now open, we've lowered the overall amount by $144,000 in fiscal year 2020. As I said, we are lucky that our expenditures are trending, trending lower than what we anticipated, which is resulting in a savings of about $600,000. Gas tax, we expect that that is going to be impacted. The amount of the impact at this point, we don't know. The last numbers we received on gas tax, these numbers are given to us by the state, was provided in January of this year. As you know, the gas tax is charged on a per gallon basis, which is consumption. It doesn't actually follow the price of gasoline. And with the stay-at-home order, essentially, a lot of people are not buying gas. For me, I know my gas takes me for three weeks now. Or my tank, it used to be a week, besides coming to work, go outside and do other activities. So, the consumption is significantly reduced. So, I do anticipate that when we get the revised numbers from the state, it's going to be much lower than what we currently have in the budget that you're looking at tonight and what we'll book in fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. And enterprise funds, water and sewer funds, we expect the impact to be insignificant, except for people who probably don't pay their bill on time. We hope people are still going to be needing water and going to be treating their sewer. So, we're not expecting to see major reductions in the water and sewer enterprise revenue funds. So, the net effect, again, is, as I said, we, at mid-year, estimated that our fund balance will be $14.1 million based on this shortfall that we are now projecting of $1.3 million. That's taking us to $12.9 million at the end of this fiscal year 2020. By the way, you can ask questions as we go through these slides. If you have any questions, see, I'll be taking it. But I encourage you to wait because some of the questions may be answered later on in the presentation. So, we go into next year's budget, which is why we're here tonight. The biggest factor that is impacting that budget, of course, is the COVID-19 situation that has created a significant economic downturn. The impact began in March of this year. We don't know how long this is going to last and the severity of it. So, I have to say, some of the numbers we have in here specifically with respect to sales tax, even though staff number is very comparable to what HDA has come up with, the reality of it is nobody knows what is really going to happen this fiscal year with respect to sales tax. Some of the other revenues that are impacted would be transient occupancy tax, although I have been lately seeing some more vehicles at the hotel. So, maybe that's good news, that things are coming back there a little bit. As I said, gas tax is going to be impacted. Community services, which are basically user fees and because of activities have been suspended due to restrictions on public gathering, those revenues pretty much stopped when we got to March. Community development, a little impact there, but not to measure. Again, this discussion is not about Measure R, but it's worthy to note that the impact on sales tax also impacts Measure R, sales tax revenues. Finally, investment earnings will be impacted as well. Part of the reason for that, two folds, is that, number one, we're going to have our fund balance reduced. So, the amount of cash we have on hand to invest is going to be lower than what it could have been. Also, the fact that interest rates have gone, continue to trend down and is a function of how much we have and the interest, the percentage that we can get on the investments. And finally, this also, for two months, we will also be seeing the impact of the lease deferals for SilverLakes. Because four months of it is in current fiscal year and two months of it is in the coming fiscal year. As I said, revenue assumptions are tentative and they're expected to change. As I said also at the beginning here, this is going to have, it has an immediate impact on our revenue. So, the impact on service levels will be dependent upon management and city council actions with respect to whether we fill the gap, the shortfall, by use of fund balance or, as you're going to see later in the presentation, a lot of the increases we have in the general fund is related to public safety, police and fire, is whether that is something then, in order to maintain that service level, whether we should backfill some of that from Measure R. And but in the absence of that, again, one word, there is going to be, there is an impact if we don't backfill that or at least it will result in our general fund reserves being lower going into the future. California cities are facing the same situation the city of Norco is facing. Again, as I said, I think we are fortunate. We are better than most cities. The thing with this thing is that it happened all of a sudden and the impact was just that significant. No one had a chance to prepare for it and that is why the impact is fairly significant. The League of California Cities actually completed a survey recently in terms of how this COVID-19 is fiscal impact on California cities. I have just selected a couple of this slide here to share with the city council and the members of the public. As you can see, they are almost in, for those cities that are, this is to my left, and depending on impact on public services, and this is classified by the size of cities. For cities like us in the population range of 25,000 to 50,000, almost 90% of them did indicate that this is going to have a drastic impact on public services. And that means they'll be making cuts in order to deal with the impact of this situation. On the revenue side, also, this is what the survey came back with. Every city said it's going to have impact on their sales tax. Only 89% of the cities says it's going to have an impact on their hotel slash bed taxes. I don't know how that is the case unless cities that don't have hotels. And that's why this number would be 89%. If you have hotels that generates TOT tax for you, it's clearly, you're going to have an impact. 72% property transfer tax will be impacted. 42% utility users tax. And the reason that percentage is low is obviously only few cities have utility users tax. Investment earnings, I'm not sure why that one is not 100%, but anyways. And then parking and admissions tax is also, a few cities that have that is going to have an impact on them. Continuing with the key factors that are impacting the budget, as I said, the public safety, how to maintain current level of public safety services. There is impact from pension increases. I know you've had this probably a million times. It's still there and unfortunately, I don't see that going away anytime soon. The fact of the matter is that for every dollar of salary that is paid to an employee, right now, the pension rate is close to almost 50 cents on a dollar. So, salary resolutions and MOUs, I have met with the employee associations, those that have their MOU expiring as of June 30. And we have agreed to not make any changes for this fiscal year. At least, we wait until we see where things, how things change. And then, if things are going in the right direction, we can come back to the city council as part of the mid-year budget adjustment and make some changes to that. But for now, it will be a status quo for employees. Utility rate increases, the water rate. We are going to be implementing the final approved water rate. And the good news this year is the rate increase is just by one and a half percent. The sewer rate increase that was approved, again, because of the financial condition of the sewer fund, we are still holding that increase in abeyance. That means we are not doing anything with that. So, if that means the sewer rate has not changed, I don't know, for the last seven years or so, at least. Other funds that are going to be impacted, again, gas tax. And we also include in this discussion our MPDS and miscellaneous grants. For FY 2020-21, the city operating budget, total budget, is about $43 million. 22, almost 23 million of that is, of course, the general fund, about $20 million or something like that. About $20 million will be from the water and sewer fund. And then there is the gas tax and some of these other miscellaneous funds. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the finance director to, and I'll come back when we get to certain slides.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. So, with regards to our general fund summary for 2021, currently where we stand with our projected revenues are at $20.7 million. Our projected expenditures at $22.9, starting with the deficit of $2.2 million currently. With regards to our revenues, one of the projections, as we know, is due to COVID-19, is our sales and TOT numbers are sort of placeholders because of the uncertainty of where we're at. Total projected revenue of $20.7 million is 4.8% down from our 1920 budget of $21.7. Our revenue categories with significant decreases, as Andy was talking about some of them. Our sales tax revenue is, you know, estimated at lower than what it is and it could take a while for it to come back up. Our investment earnings and lease income, mainly due to our fund balance with lower cash balances, resulting also in lower interest rates, as well as the SilverLakes rent deferral. As for our TOTs, it's also due to, you know, people not traveling. Although, you know, we do see that our hotels currently seem to have people there. So, when you drive by, it don't happen there. So, we are expecting that, hopefully, that doesn't hit us hard. So, our services and recreation fees, that's one of the biggest activities since most activities as of March have been suspended due to the governors not allowing those gatherings. Property tax revenues are also not expected to be immediately impacted since usually the county has a delay of when they're assessing those properties. So, we won't see that in the near future. But later on, we will see property tax revenues probably be effective with our valuation of our properties later on. Our revenue highlights here for overall, the change for the 1920 budget is a reduction of about $1 million. It's 4.8% difference from what our 1920 amended budget is. And again, feel free to, you know, if you do have questions, to interrupt. Our estimated general fund revenues by source, as you could see here, our main funding source for our general fund is our sales tax revenue, followed by property tax and new vehicle license fees and our property taxes. So, those are our three main largest source of general fund revenue. In this chart here, we're sort of just comparing where our budget was for 1920 to where our estimated year-end will be and compared also to what we're proposing for 2021. The main decrease here you would see is the sales tax. For a property tax, this is collected by the Riverside County and then distributed to eligible tax entities. This includes 1% of the ad valorem property and also a share of residual tax increment from the dissolved of the RDA. The impacts from economic conditions are generally delayed. Right now, it's assuming a 1.28% decrease from fiscal year 1920 and the actual collections could be lower due to delinquencies. The city does not participate in the county's teeter program, so delinquencies, if they are coming, you know, we won't have, no revenues coming in, so. For sales tax, this represents, you know, the city's chair of our Bradley Burn Sales Tax, our general fund does not include the Measure R sales tax revenue. Projected amount vary tentative due to economic uncertainty is a 9.2 reduction from our 1920 budget. Also includes receipt of an estimated deferral of 333,000 from the governor's order of deferring that to businesses. Projections based on the data that HDL provided and is also subject to change. And the numbers that HDL provided also assumes that the stay home order is lifted by the end of May. Property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, those are collected and allocated by the DMV and are based on assessed value of real property. And for fiscal year 2021, our projected amount is about 4% higher than 1920. This was also data provided by HDL. Other taxes consist of public safety sales tax, property transfer tax, TOT, business license, and satellite wagering tax. We assume decreases in both property transfer tax, business license, and public safety sales tax. TOT does, our TOT this year does assume, for the coming year, does assume a full year of Wood Springs being open, so that is something that, you know, will be different from this year. And also our change in the formula with the Fairfield Suites agreement. So that also changes for this coming up year. Total reduced is also expected due to the slowdown in tourism. Public safety sales tax amount is also based on data provided by HDL. Our franchise fees consist of gas, electric, cable TV, and our waste hauler franchise fees. We do not anticipate any material changes from recent numbers. The only thing with this is our waste management fees, if they do, you know, if they do change and do get approved to go up and increase, so that might provide a little additional revenue, but that's right now, you know, uncertain. Fines and penalties, this consists of parking fees, vehicle code violations, and code enforcement fines. This also depends on the enforcement levels and our collections rates. No material changes are anticipated from the previous recent numbers. Interest and lease income, this is our interest income is expected to decrease due to the fact that we'll have lower cash balances and interest rates also are low. Our decrease in lease income from Silver Lakes is due to the rent deferral that was passed a couple of weeks ago and also it will affect the first two months of the following fiscal year. The decreases are slightly offset though by projected increase in the sell site leases. As for community development, this includes planning, building, and engineering user fees. Although the economy is expected to slow down considerably, the projection for this is based on projects that have been planned and are still anticipated to take place in the next fiscal year. So there's really no material changes to revenue projections for community development at this time. Community services fees, this is comprised of mostly sport program fees, day camp, facility rentals, and use and special event contributions. Revenues from these programs are expected to just decrease significantly, especially due to the suspension of many of the activities and restrictions on gatherings. Other revenues, our key revenues in this includes our voluntary emergency medical subscription fees, dog licenses, our payment penalties, fire inspection fees, our fire plan check fees. These revenues are expected to remain stable as compared to previous years and also the 1920 included one-time items as well. For administrative overhead, reimbursements to the general fund by other funds that pay for those are paid by the general fund. They are determined based on our cost allocation plan that is performed by external revenue cost specialists, except for one-time items or periodic recalculations of overhead costs. These costs are fairly stable from year to year.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question real quick before we get into expenditures? Thank you. And I know HDL is the one that did all your projections for you on some of that and that and your, the staff. They projected the end till May of 2020, correct?
Yes. That was based on the assumption that we would, the order would be lifted at the end of May.
Okay, so did they, in their projections, did they also add in on the revenue projection if some of our businesses that have been shut down, if they didn't come back? Or how did, I'm just trying to get an idea, how did they base their complete projections on this May 20, as we look, 20, 20 date, as we look forward, if you have that? If, Andy, if you have that, just look, trying to figure out the whole thing.
Right, it's very hard to predict how many of these businesses, businesses will still remain in business, all right? But if you recall, I sent out to you the economic trends, I think if you have that. I think, yeah, that stuff there. It kind of looks at the different sectors of the economy and the changes that they expect will happen to those sectors based on economic analysis based, performed by Beacon Economics. And they use that in trying to estimate the various categories of sales tax. It's not, it's not a percentage that is applied to all of the sales tax database. So for example, restaurants may have a different reduction compared to vehicles where they, as you can see there, I think for the several months in the future, they are expecting almost 60% reduction to auto sales for some months. But that's kind of the driver. But as I said, and HDL is the first to tell you this, these numbers are not written in stone, they are going to change. We meet with them on a quarterly basis. I suspect that the numbers will change again when we get to, we met with them this past week. In three months, we meet with them again. I expect that these numbers, especially with sales tax, are going to be revised as well.
Wait a minute, did I go over? Yes. Our expenditure summaries. As we get into our expenditures, our currently is estimated to be at 22.9 million. This is an increase of 5.7% from our 1920 budget of 1.2 million. Key expenditure categories with significant increases, most of the increase are from our public safety contracts, our pension and retiring, medical and group insurance, and caring forward for software implementation, as well as ground and building maintenance, liability insurance premiums, and computing and operate, sorry, operations charges. Many of those cost items are passed through from third parties. Riverside County Sheriff's Department contract rates are budgeted with an increase of 7% from 1920. But that contract does, this coming up has the full year funding for a second dedicated traffic officer. As for the Cal Fire Department, the contract rates are budgeted with a 5% increase from fiscal year 1920. Over, yes. Yeah, that's the changes, you could see here, the changes, the 1.2 million from the 1920 budget, the 1920 budget was 21.7 million. And with an overall about 5.7% change. Here you'll see the chart of where our expenditures for the general fund are mainly by function. You could see that our sheriffs and fire are the majority, followed by our parks, rec, and communication services and mainly due to the building grounds in their department. Here's a chart that we prepared to for the expenditures that you could see sort of the increase, increases between the 1920 budget compared to where we are projected at year end and the 2021 projected budget. Currently for our fund balance, we have balance as of June 30th, it's estimated to be at 12.8 million. And for the next fiscal year, it's projected to be at 10.5 million. Here we sort of estimate how we came up with those, our fund balances and just to point out our estimated fund balance at the end of next year of 10.5 million. We also, based on what you guys had done in your strategic planning to require a 25% set aside for emergencies, so that's also calculated in there to give an estimated fund balance of, you know, 4.8 million. On here on this chart, I'll let Andy discuss this one.
You know, you've seen this chart every year for the last, oh, probably 10 years. We started, we credit this chart when we, when we are in the recession we had in 2009. And the purpose was just to track our progress in terms of how we are coming out from that recession. This is a 10-year data that we are looking at right here. As you can see there, since we came out of that recession back, I think the first one is 2011, 2012, we have steadily made progress, okay? And that's because our revenues have consistently outpaced our expenditures. And the general fund reserve, which is the green line on the bottom, consequently has increased. And last year, we had a very good year where we had that big jump in general fund reserve. But what we are experiencing this current fiscal year 2020 and what we think is going to happen in fiscal year 2021, those reserve numbers are going down. Simply, we wanted to just kind of share that information. And I also want to talk a little bit, some other things to consider in terms of measuring the city's financial strength. In addition to the general fund, we do have also a fund that was established over 10 years ago, Special Asset Revenue Fund. The purpose of that was to deposit one-time revenues that we generate that we don't need immediately. And there is, there are some restrictions in terms of when that money can be used. Specifically, it requires a super majority of the city council to approve any use of Special Asset Revenue Fund. So to me, I also do look at this as an extension of the general fund because the only restriction is a restriction that is placed by the city council, not by a third party, okay? We have Measure R funds also, as you can see from the expenditure information that Lisette just provided, a good portion of the $1.2 million increase we are projecting for next year in the general fund is to maintain the current public safety levels that we have. And because of that increase in the rates, so it's, again, the city council needs to also determine, as I said at the beginning, whether a portion of this Measure R revenues, which are intended to maintain public safety, public safety levels, whether we want to look to that to defer some of the cost increases that are associated with the general, with public safety. Again, as Lisette pointed out, the, there was a resolution that was done way back in 1998 that requires that 25%, that requires emergency reserve, which is set at 25% of the budget. So 5.3 million is 25% of this year's projected general fund expenditures. Finally, a portion of that general fund reserve is being placed to do certain projects that require those monies, for us to have those monies.
Mayor, can I ask Andy a question real quick? Just a clarification, thank you. Or Lisette, we have a 7% increase in public safety, correct?
That's correct.
That isn't the contractual rate thing, go up 7%? That's our overall budget, correct? That includes?
The overall budget rate increase this year is actually 9% for sheriff. The contract rate increase is 7%. Part of the reason why the increase is higher than the, the 7% applied to the contract rate is the second traffic officer is funded for full year this year. Last year, obviously, that was, was not the case, okay? And there were some other, little things we did last year also to kind of hold that line, but that is not, this is what we have this year. Again, the 7% contract rate increase plus the full year.
Okay, so, but I'm just, I want to make sure I'm talking about the same thing. We have the sheriff's contractual rate, that went up 7% compared of last year, then?
Yeah, that's what they've told us.
Okay.
The rate is, actually, they said 7.5%, but we've, we've just put 7%.
Okay, that makes sense. But I understand, so the nine is the additional traffic officer if we continue on?
Right.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Right.
Just really quick, Andy, just to clarify, the general fund fund balance, 5.3 million designated for emergencies and 500,000. Just so people understand, the 5.3, is that inside the general fund balance or is it outside? Is it something additional over on top?
It's.
Right, so it's inside our 12 million?
Yes.
And then the 500,000, that's also inside the 12 million?
Yes. So for our water fund for 2021, our total projected revenues are currently at 13.3 million. That is currently based on the current consumption levels and the 1.5 rate increase expected for our fixed charges and our water usage rates July 1st. Our total projected expenses are estimated at 11.7 million and that's current, based on current service levels, including the cost of take or pay contracts. The budget for the waterfront is flexible depending on the levels of operation. The estimated change in working capital is currently an increase of 1.7 million. Working capital used to fund the rate stabilization reserve as well as the minimum operating reserve. Any remaining working capital is used to fund our water capital projects. Here's a chart for the, for the waterfront revenues. As you could see, it's our projected budget for 2021 is at 13.3 million and based on our 1920 budget of 13 million, which is, gives us a 1.74% increase. On this chart here, we're, we're showing where our biggest water, water charges revenues are coming from. As you could see, our water usage is about 53%, and our fixed monthly water charges are at 44%. This, I guess, was one of the goals that the city wanted a couple of years ago with regards to the, the rate study that was done. And I believe the goal was 40% to 60% to ensure that not all the revenues for the waterfront are based on consumption. So that, that percentage has been exceeded here, as you could see, where our fixed charges are at 44%.
Where the governor restricted the amount of water that folks could use. That had a significant negative impact to waterfront revenues. And at that particular time, the spread between usage rate and fixed rate was highly weighted to the usage rate. And one of the primary objectives of that rate study was to restructure the rate, so that we can derive a good, a much higher percentage of the revenues from, from the fixed rate. And as, as the finance director has pointed out here, it looks like we have achieved that goal as we come to the end of that rate study, rate adjustments related to that rate study.
For our waterfront expenses, for 2021, we're projecting a budget of 11.6 million. And compared to the 1920 budget of 10.6, when the, it's about 9% increase, the biggest top reasons for that is due to the salaries and benefits that were previously discussed, especially with the retirement and medical rates. But the other reason too is the refunding of our bonds that we did, so that increases the debt service for coming up in this next fiscal year.
They take additional project money, $14 million. So even though that refund, that refunding generated significant savings, the, the primary reason is because we took additional debt to do water projects.
Mayor. Either Lizette or Andy. I'll come back to a lot of this, but just on waterfront, on interest earnings, that we're showing that we're going to end up this year $73,000 with interest earnings. Next year, we're projected 80,000 in earnings. But like I said, I'll come back to it. Earlier with the general fund, on our investments and interest income, we're showing that diminishing.
Right.
So why?
So this one is a little different.
Chad doing a better job investing here, or?
A little different.
Why does this income go up and the other goes down?
The interest income related to the waterfront is actually budgeted into two areas. The capital project fund, which is where most of the cash is, so when we review that budget, you're going to see a lot higher number. But on the operating side though, because we are increasing the working capital for rate stabilization and for operations, that cash level is going up as well in the operating fund. And from where it was last year, okay, but one of the targets that we set to achieve was to make sure we have in the waterfront, three months' water of expenditures set aside, and also a certain amount, I don't remember the exact amount, for rate stabilization account. So each year, those funds are going up, not going down. The cash that is associated with those. Does that make sense?
It does. Then can I just finish backup, or do you want me to wait on just my overall interest income? Wait? No?
No.
So on general fund, overall interest income, where, where we have like fixed rate long-term, have, have we been put on notice, or, because I think some of those go out like three years or five years or whatever, a reduction in rates? Or I'm probably wrong on the years, I can't recall that, but?
The money we have in the general fund is invested with the local, local agency investment fund. That is actually almost a liquid investment. And the interest on, interest rate on that changes basically on a daily basis, okay? Certainly on a monthly basis, and the interest is allocated on a quarterly basis. So those rates are going down. They are not fixed coupon rate that we have on, on certain bonds. We do have some bonds that have a fixed rate, but that's a smaller portion of the total portfolio. And, and we don't actually go out to invest for five years. Most of the things that you see there, except if it's a debt service reserve account, we're usually keeping it short-term, usually under three years.
Somewhere I was thinking we had some little longer-term investments, but, okay. It was that part, we had talked about it a while ago, and was that one part I didn't read correctly?
Oh, the, the step-up coupons?
Yeah, there, there you go. See, I thought on the step-up ones, those were longer-term. So, and the step-up is probably no more going to step up, it's going to step down?
No.
It will still step?
It's still step up.
Okay. Okay. That's what I was getting confused on. Thank you.
You're welcome. Here for our estimated waterfront expenditures by type, the majority of our expenditures are based up for purchase water and utilities. And second with our debt service and overhead, and, and as well as our salaries and benefits are the top three. As we move to the sewer fund, for our sewer fund, our projected revenues are 7.9 million, and that's based on the current service levels. Most of the revenues are derived from fixed monthly charges. Previously approved rate increase will continue to remain in a bay, so there will not be an increase not expected. And no rate stabilization account is required in this fund. Our total projected expenses are at 6.5 million, with an estimated change in working capital of 1.4 million increase. Working capital is used to fund our capital sewer projects, and also required working capital reserves have been met. Here you'll see a breakdown of the sewer fund revenues with the one point, about 1.6% increase from, change from last year's budget to our projected budget. So our 2021 is at 7.8 million as compared to 7.75 for 1920. For our revenues, the main source of revenue is our sewer service revenues. Since they're, since they're on fixed revenues, there's less volatility in them, and also with the no sewer rate increase. For sewer fund expenses, our projected budget for 2021 is at 6.5 million compared to about 6.6 million for 1920, so a small decrease of about, about 1.7%. This chart shows the, where most of our major expenses for the sewer fund are due to contraction on professional services, which include our sewer treatment costs. And then followed by the debt service and overhead charges, and our salaries and benefits.
Mr. Mayor, if I before, and maybe Chad has the answer on this one. I know Rick, well, we haven't confirmed our budget yet. We, we don't have our budget meeting until next week. So Chad, if you have, I know you probably had your executive meeting, is there any changes to Rick's budgets going to impact us?
The projections that we used in the budget are reflective of what's been proposed at the meetings thus far by Rick Russ, so we don't anticipate any changes.
So I shouldn't be shocked next week then? Okay, thank you. I'm just checking.
Okay, for our gas tax fund, currently its total projected revenues of 687,000. We anticipate significant reduction in this revenue due to the lower consumption. Use of this revenue is restricted to eligible expenditures, including traffic, light maintenance, pothole repairs, traffic light utilities, and tree trimming and street signs. Our total projected expenditures are at 884,000. We estimate a fund balance of about 163,000. The difference of 197,000 between revenues and expenditures will come from available fund balance. Our miscellaneous grants for 2021, here's a little summary of them. We have our CTC senior program at 84,000, our emergency management performance grant at 9,9800, our homeland security 3,000, about 3,000, community development block grant 80, 86,000, and our Newman, our Nancy Newman trust fund is expected for 46,000, AQMD 51.5, and our supplemental law enforcement grant at 100,000.
Maybe for the lieutenant, you're, that supplemental law enforcement grant of 100,000, is part of that to be used for the DUI checkpoints and stuff like that, is that what that's for, or?
Now, the supplemental law enforcement grant is the ongoing cops grant that we receive through the Department of Justice each year.
Okay.
So the, the grant that you're talking about is the Office of Traffic Safety Grant, which is provided by the state. And that's a small amount that the department receives and distributes amongst all the contract partners.
Okay. I knew it was a grant of some sort, but I didn't know which one.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, before we jump in, on those grants, and Andy, if you happen to know, we know that the supplemental law enforcement grants, federal, community development grants, federal. The Nancy Newman trust fund is private. Homeland Security is federal. Has the federal, the Fed said anything about cutting anything out, kind of like the state?
No, everything we have here, pretty much very small. We don't anticipate any change in here. The CDBG, I, I don't, Brian, you might answered our question, I don't anticipate any change in the CDBG.
In our most recent discussions with the county, we don't see, actually, it increased a little bit, so, based on what their projections.
So we're not going to look at a 10% cut across the board?
No, we're not hearing that at all from the county.
And I'm just trying to think which one of these are state grants, and none of these are state, are they?
None is, no, we don't have any state grants here.
Okay, so all this is federal or private? Okay, our local, thank you. Thank you.
So now we'll begin with our department overview budgets. We do have, starting with the sheriff, if he'll come over. Thank you.
Sheriff, unless you have any questions regarding the overview that we have gone through, this will be a good time to go over those questions, if you have any questions in the absence of that.
So I just had one question. In the gas tax fund summary, there's a difference between the two of 197,000, and you said that that would come from the fund balance? Is that accounted for in our budget deficit though, or is that not accounted for in the total deficit that we talked about?
So it's accounted as part of the deficit in the gas tax fund.
Okay, which is separate from general fund?
Yes, from the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Most of them I asked on interest income. But I did have a question on special asset fund. You mentioned earlier that, that is not considered in our general fund reserves, but we do have that in our interest income earnings?
Good question. We'll take a look at that. The interest income on that fund is one of the provisions in the, in the resolution is that is supposed to be transferred to the general fund, okay?
Okay, so that interest goes to our general fund?
Yes.
Reserves?
It goes to the general fund as part of general fund revenues, which obviously, if expenditures are lower than revenues, flows into the reserves.
That quarterly or yearly, or? Is it a deferred income?
I think it's made on an annual basis.
Okay.
At year-end, yeah, we do it at year-end.
Okay.
So did I hear correctly that there may be an increase in pension contributions? What, wasn't sure what you meant by that.
The, the pension rate for that Cal Fire determines each year as our, especially our unfunded liability, so that went up. And so that's, you know, even though our salary.
What was the percentage of that again?
Forty, I don't know it off the top. Yeah, it was forty-something percent, closer to 50.
Every dollar in salary would pay almost 50 cents?
Yes, on our unfunded liability.
And so when we hear the governor talking about maybe that rate's going to go up, it could get worse?
The Pension Board sets the rate.
Right.
The California Public Employees Retirement, Retirement System Board. What drives that rate is, among other things, is investment earnings. And to the extent that investment earnings are expected to be low, go down, right? They, they make up that shortfall from increasing the rate.
I understand, yeah.
So there are other factors such as changes in demographics and, and things like that, the amortization period for their unfunded liability. These are some of the factors that impact the rate. But clearly, it's been going up, and.
And I believe they only, they only provide that rate annually, so that will.
I do, I do know that, I just, I guess I didn't realize it was jumping to 50 cents on the dollar. That's crazy.
That is for classic employees, let me say that. And those were, applies to employees that were in the system prior to 2013, you know, during the pension reform that took place. In 2013, they created another pension plan.
Right.
Under what they call Public PEBRA, Public Employees Pension Retirement Act. And the benefits associated with those are much lower than the benefits associated with the classic pension. And therefore, the, the pension rates for those employees are much lower.
Okay.
Significantly.
And then the, is there a chance that the Wood Springs will offset overall? We don't know this yet, probably, but will, do you think just the addition of Wood Springs may make the loss of revenue during this time more level? Because I noticed Wood Springs is the one that seems to have all the people in front of it.
So, so because of Wood Spring being a long-term, you know, they're, well, before COVID was to advertise for long-term stays, which wouldn't apply for the TOT, but they have, you know, for anything that is under the 30-day stay, they are subject to this TOT tax, so, which, that's what appears to be happening, that they're allowing less stays, for customers' stays to.
Stay, they're making them stay less than 30 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then waste management, the, the franchise fee or the fees to residents may go up, or?
So that, that.
We have another increase coming?
As of right now, that's.
Rate, rate adjustment every year, based on the changes in the consumer price index, as well as other pass-through cost to waste management. as well as all that pass-through cost to waste management. At this moment, we are still working with them to finalize what those numbers are. I suspect those numbers will come back to you for approval probably in July, because we haven't gotten all the information we need to bring it forward to you. But I think what Lisette was referring to in her presentation is, is to the extent that those rates go up, we will share a little bit, because we collect franchise fees on, on, based on the rate.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. So, the sheriff's budget for fiscal year 2021. So, here's a summary of our overall sheriff's budget, which covers sheriffs, crossing guards, our citizens on patrol, and any supplemental law. So, for fiscal year 2021, our budget is expected to be 7.4 million, compared to 6.7 million in fiscal year 1920. And why is that? It's because our contract rate increase of 7%. And the majority of that contract rate increase is because of the unfunded liabilities. Our funding source is primarily through the general fund, 7.1, I'm sorry, 7.3 million is from the general fund, and we receive the supplemental law enforcement grant of 100,000. Those services that you're provided through our department are one dedicated lieutenant, three dedicated community service officers, two dedicated traffic officers. This will be the first year where you'll have a full two dedicated traffic officers, two sergeants, two community-oriented policing and problem-solving deputies, and one full-time and part-time city employee. This includes the 60 patrol hours per day, our crossing guards, and our citizens patrol. Our budget also includes overtime supplies, mileage, and other necessary services. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
I have to give our sheriff and, and all of you prompts for him standing up for the residents and, and holding that line, okay? And, but at the same time, and I think this goes back to election-year politics, that I was under the impression during the election that we wouldn't see large increases, rates would be stabilized or go down a little bit, and I know it's a promise you anything during an election, so, is this 7% a hard and fast number? Is this where it's going to end up with, with the county? Has it had supervisor approval yet?
So, the 7%, I'm not sure if it's gone to the board of supervisors yet, but always remember that mid-year, that rate could change. This is projected to begin the fiscal year, and historically, just like we saw last year, it reduced significantly. So, we always budget on the higher side in case that it is a true 7%. We can't forecast what it may be, but our department, working with the county, because of the unfunded liabilities, have determined the 7% this year.
Thank you.
Lieutenant, I do have a question. It's because of everything else that's going on with the county, the shortfalls, and the potential for them not being able to fill the jail in Indio or open it up, big economic factor as far as the county goes, the sheriff's department. I look at attrition, and I look at everything else, and just so, because we have people looking, generally, contract cities will be taken care of, correct, over the county. Is that still going to be, I hate to see it, but you know, there's a reality here, and I hate to see deputies get pink slips or furloughs. So, I don't know if you have the ability to share that with, with us, but just your thoughts, if nothing else, if you can't speak for the sheriff, but you can certainly speak for your, your staff here and the people here.
Sure. Contract cities are our priority, and they will always be fulfilled with staff. So, you have no worries to lose staffing within our city of Norco or any other contract. I know the sheriff's stance, it's preliminary with the budget cuts that are potentially going to affect our department and other county departments. And I know the sheriff and the administration are looking at potential cost savings for that, and I know personally that the sheriff is not wanting to lay off anybody or, or pink slip anybody. That is not, that would be at the very bottom of his list. So, they're looking at other ways for cost-saving measures to make up the significant amount that we're in a shortfall as a county. But going back to your question, this will not affect our contract with the city of
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council and staff. It's good to see you all. So, hopefully I don't make this go back the wrong way. Well, there's one step, and I'll move to the slide that summarizes. So, for fire protection for fiscal year 2021, the budget amount will be $4.4 million, compared to a $4.2 million for fiscal year 2019, 2020. So, approximately $200,000 increase in the budget due to contract increase and an assumed 5% increase from each year, and then a slight increase to IT. So, a background on some of that, those are staff benefit, changes, workers' comp, all of those things that are built into the staff benefit rate package that I'll be right up front, are very difficult, difficult to try to explain the whole package, but, so it's all lumped into there, and I can definitely get more info on that if it were needed. Our funding source is all from the, the general fund, except for the $13,000 Homeland Security Grant, which all of you know behind the scenes, Sarah Muro is working, always working diligently to secure grant funding, to enhance the, any, any aspect of fire protection, the EOC. In fact, I was going to save it for city council later on this evening, but just, just this Friday, Matt, bail me out here if I mess this up, but there'll be a communications phone system upgrade at Fire Station 47 in the EOC. All through the grant was a match, matching grant, which enhances our emergency operations center capability, should we ever have to, to appropriately ramp up and staff the EOC. The services, as, as you know, for fire protection with Cal Fire, they, they remain consistent for fire and EMS, one battalion chief, and I, Andy, is this now a good time to elaborate a little bit on the cost allocation? So, Andy, Andy came to us about our battalion chief position, and as you know, go back, I've lost track, I think it's been almost two years now, our rank-and-file staff, so battalion chiefs and down, are now on what we call rotating schedule. So, every pay period, they rotate two days back. So, as you know, you didn't see Scott Lane at city council meetings about half the time. He was off-duty based on the staffing rotation. You always have a battalion chief covering Norco and the Northwest cities and communities. However, after, when Andy approached us, you no longer had your dedicated battalion chief, meaning Scott Lane. So, I think, I think it was a very good question that Andy asked, and we have an option. The city has the ability to pay what we would call full freight for a battalion chief, so that's 100% staff, or salary and benefits. As you all know, we only bill for actual rates, not, not top-step budgeted or anything like that. Basically, you get billed for what services you receive. So, in discussion with my supervisor, Deputy Chief Todd Williams, our, our management approved going from a full-freight battalion chief to what we call cost-allocated. So, there's a formula there that we use. This can get very technical, I'll try to keep it to where I don't confuse everyone. Essentially, four stations would make up one full-freight battalion chief. As you know, Norco has two. So, now Norco, starting July 1, will pay into our cost allocation funding for a battalion chief based on those two fire stations, which many of our 20 partner cities, some, some opt to pay full freight for their battalion chiefs, they like their own dedicated battalion chiefs, but it, it does come with a cost. And I, I think the city's making a very responsible decision to cost allocate, especially, you were used to having Chief Lane at every Wednesday night council meeting. And with our rotating schedule, which is a labor negotiation, you don't have that anymore. You're always going to have me standing here, but, but you're not going to have Scott Lane, and you all saw his, or will see here soonly, he, he did earn the rank of limited-term division chief. The announcement's out, and I can definitely forward and share that. But getting back on point here, you still will have a battalion chief always covering the city, the division chief is always around, or, or my supervisor. I guess I want to make sure, you're always in good hands, one way or another. So, your fire protection staffing still remains the same, five captains, five engineers, five, five paramedic firefighters, so that staffs both station, and then one fixed relief crew. And then, you still pay for one half of an inspector, which is Nolan, who does his best to complete 100% of Norco's annual business inspections, which is a great program. And we still have Sandy, Sandy and Nolan as our, Sandy as our specialist, safety specialist, which we share Sandy and Nolan with Eastvale, which is a great, great cooperative endeavor. So, we still have Sandy, we're consistent there. We still support the, the NART program and the associated costs, and then we still have our two fire stations, no changes there, Station 57 over on Cordon and 47 over on Hillside. And that's the end of report, and be glad to entertain any questions.
Mr. Mayor? All right. Station 14 on Hamner. I mean, we pay for ours, just like we do the sheriff's department. Do you have any information what could happen to that one? I mean, if it's scary, it's scary, is what it is.
Well, I'm always concerned when you have, just, just sitting here listening to the first part of this presentation of Norco's budget situation with, due to the COVID-19. We're always in, in a time when you start hearing things like sales tax reductions, as a state employee, 26 years, I worry about that all the time, what, what could be next? But as of right now, our, our unit chief, Chief Sean Newman, has not indicated any type of operational budget cuts. As of the first part, well, right about May 1, all 13 designated Cal Fire stations, like Station 14 there on Hamner, are staffed with one engine. And June 8, we will add five second state companies to our state stations that have two state engines. So, as of right now, I would consider it Cal Fire's, Norco's, Engine 3174 out of the Hamner station, it is business as normal, or as usual. We haven't heard of any type of operational cuts. What could come in the future? As you all know, I can't answer that tonight, but I think in the situation, we got to hope for the best.
You'll let us know if-
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
So, I'm not following the battalion chief change. So, Scott Lane got a promotion, and then, so, yeah, please.
So, as the chief said, we have 24-hour battalion chief coverage. The arrangement we had previously, which we started when we initiated the contract up until probably a year or so ago, when they changed the way they staff for battalion chiefs, okay? Even when, so when we started the contract, as you recall, we had, at any given time, two dedicated battalion chief, Scott Lane and Mr. Owen, Richard Owen, okay? They have since modified how they staff for battalion chief, meaning you get your 24-hour coverage, but it's not, you're not assured who is going to be here all the time. And, but, if you want to still do the dedicated, which is you have a face that you see all the time, right? You can then do that dedicated. I don't think, over the last six months, I don't think he's worked out for us since they started changing their staffing. So, I did go to them that instead of paying the approximately $300,000 a year for the dedicated cost of a battalion chief, we like to be allocated, and so, we pay based on the number of fire stations. From a service level, we don't lose anything. Again, we have 24-hour coverage, like we, we had before. The only difference is we are paying 150,000 instead of $300,000 on annual basis.
Okay, so just, just to, I just want to make sure, so I can relay this if somebody asks. So, essentially, we have a rotating battalion chief, we never know who it's going to be, but underlying is yourself, who knows the city, knows, so I'm, I'm assuming Cal Fire's not just going to drop a battalion chief from like Ucaipa into the city. I'm assuming it'll be somebody that is going to have some knowledge, but there's always going to be the underlying administration.
Cortez, yep, temporary.
He can rotate at any time. And so, Battalion Chief Lane, what was his promotion?
I may have confused part of that with talking about cost allocation battalion chiefs, and then talking about-
No doubt, I'm confused.
I may have added to that. So, pull, pull the cost allocation Norco battalion chief aside. So, Chief, Chief Lane was on an operational temporary assignment as a battalion chief. And then, yesterday, good, good news for Chief Lane, he's one of our brightest, one of our best, he was promoted to the same rank as me, but it's division chief, but limited term. And based on some folks that are out injured, that could at some point turn into a competitive process for a permanent job, but Scott is a division chief, just like, just like me now, lack of better terms, which is huge for our organization. As you know, Scott is very talented, and it brings a lot to the table, not only, not only to all of our cooperators, but large-scale incident management as well.
Talk about confused, I keep, you're above Scott, right?
I was, now we're even.
Now you're even, okay.
He'll probably be my boss someday.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I have. We're saving 150,000, all right.
And Kevin, just, just to note, Chief Cortez, maybe not Scott Lane, but he's working really hard to be that way, and he's a good communicator, and is constantly communicating to staff, so-
Is he going to let Robin use the siren?
Oh, I would imagine.
Yes, sir, yep. If I, if we could talk Chief Cortez into staying, we would, but based on where he lives, it, it would create a challenge for him, but very, very kind words, Brian, he's a great guy. Thank you.
We're going to tag team on the administration budget here. The detailed numbers are on pages 95 to 110. So, this is a overview of the administrative department, consists of the city manager department, the city clerk, economic development, and the Sixth Street Gateway sign is not really a, a department, but it's part of economic development, and then the human resources. The total budget here for fiscal year 2021 is $1.3 million, compares to $1.2 million for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Again, you see that those, I'm going to just talk about the administrative, the city manager side of it, and the city clerk, we'll talk about the city clerk. The city manager, again, but what we include in this budget, which is a total of $511,000, compared to the 489 from last fiscal year, or a 4.4% increase, consists of the city manager and the communications manager. Primarily, the services that are provided in a nutshell is development and implementation of city council administrative, city council and administrative policies, direction, provide direction, and supervision of all departments. direction, and supervision of all departments. Citywide business, provide communications about services, programs, lots and activities. Also, increase the city's exposure through enhanced branding and marketing. Those are the primary, very high-level overview that doesn't count. The 25 costs I get in Adele, and some of the other things I do. But anyways, that's a quick overview of that. City clerk.
Our total fiscal year budget for 2021 is $458,400 compared to $372,501 in fiscal year 2019, 2020. Our increase in the budget is due to the conversion of our administrative clerk from part-time to full-time. And then we also have the municipal election for 2020 this year, which is a one-time expenditure of $45,000 plus some contractual service rates that we have to do for interpretation. Our funding source is from the general fund, 100%. The services that are provided by funding is full-time city clerk, deputy city clerk, administrative clerk. The services you're receiving are the execution of city councils, city manager and city staff legislative processes, like the meeting we have here, election administration, filing of conflict of interest statements in candidate office holder campaign filings, recruitment maintenance of city advisory council committee and commissions, maintenance of municipal code and administrative manual, and records management. That's where I'm at right now. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to tell you that in every, I'm not, there's no comparison to other city clerks, but I just, I really appreciate, and I love the last one, I love the one before that, but the calm that you bring to the office is really remarkable, and I really appreciate that. And it's, you have a very leveling influence, I think, in City Hall. And again, that's no, there's just, every city clerk brings something different. And I just think that element you've brought to your position is really, really good for the city of Norco.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Never!
Any more questions? Very good. Thank you.
Economic development, I'll take a quick stab at that. This is a status quo budget of $190,000 compared to $106,000 from last year. It's entirely funded through the general fund. Some of the key services that are provided by economic development includes attraction of new revenue generating businesses, ensuring the success of existing businesses, elevation of Norco's profile as a desirable place to reside and conduct business, promotion of the city as a visitor's destination, contributing to sales tax and TOT, also provide assistance to local businesses. And that has been happening quite a bit with COVID-19 in terms of making sure that they are aware of the resources that are out there to help them. Any questions on this? Okay. Finally, human resources, again, status quo budget, $191,000 compared to $179,000. However, this division is funded by the general fund largely, but there is a small portion of that budget that comes from the water and sewer fund. Actually, I think they use more of our time than the amount that is charged to there. So I'm going to have to talk to Chad about that. Anyway, anyway, services provided by funding here is human resources manager. It's a one-person department. It's amazing how all the stuff that comes through there gets done. It provides support to all city departments, including recruitment, compensation, benefits, training, employer-employee relations, counseling, personnel investigations, management and administration of the general liability and workers' comp programs, and also development and implementation of rules and regulations regarding personnel practices. I'll take any questions if you have any for HR. Non-departmental, I will take that also. Pages 111 through 113 has the details pertaining to this non-departmental. The total budget for non-departmental is $2.8 million compared to $2.6 million for the current fiscal year. The funding comes entirely from the general fund. And then we're going to take a look at what we include in this budget, as I said, is $2.8 million for coming fiscal year compared to current fiscal year, $2.6 million, about $200,000 increase. And we'll see why those numbers are increasing. Entirely, again, funded by the general fund. The costs that are included in this non-departmental are costs that are not directly associated with any departments that operate. For example, one of the legacy costs that we carried over when the fire department was dissolved was unfunded pension liability related to the services they provided at the time the department was dissolved. That cost is included in this department. Unemployment claims, we don't have a lot of them, but when we have them, the cost for that is included here. We are also self-insured for unemployment benefit purposes. That means we don't pay a rate every pay period to EDD to pay for unemployment. Rather, when somebody claims unemployment, the cost of the payments that are made to that individual, they send us a bill for it. Citywide dues and memberships, this are membership to, say, WR CAG, you know, League of California Cities, SCAG, some of LAFCO, all those membership fees, which are for the benefit of the city as a whole, they are included here. One of the biggest items in this budget is retiree medical insurance premium. The insurance premium we pay on a monthly basis for those employees that have retired from the city and that are receiving medical insurance contribution from the city. Also, as you know, we set up this fund account many years ago to put some money aside to fund this unfunded liability related to medical insurance. Before the stock market went into a tailspin, I think we had accumulated over $10 million in this account. The idea was, after we, I was going to say, in the next two years, we will stop contributing to this fund. In fact, we will start drawing from it to pay for these premiums that we get on a monthly basis, so that that would relieve the impact on our operating budget. But there was obviously some losses as a result of that, downturn in the stock market. But good news is that a lot of that has come back too, as we stand here today. Nobody knows what it's going to be tomorrow, but still, we have accumulated a substantial amount of money in that fund. I don't have the number of what it is as of today, but I'll pass that on to you when I get it from March. But it's still, hopefully, still very substantial. And we also provide funding for certain contractual and professional services, HDL tax consultant, employment practices, that we belong to a consortium, we pay for those costs here, financial services for the success of agency. In fact, this is ultimately reimbursed to us from the county. We actually get a little more than what we spend. Specialized outside legal, one of the things we have here is if we have any legal services that John is not assuming, then we pay for it here. One example is the outstanding issue we have, litigation we have with the Department of Finance regarding their refusal to pay our costs, certain costs that they were paying us previously. Community outreach, employee recognition, parking citation processing cost, and county property tax administration cost. Another big item here, which is one of the reasons why we have this increase here, in fact, the two increases, the increases we have relate to the unfunded pension liability, the retiree medical insurance, and the general liability and workers' compensation insurance premiums. The other thing we include here is also the cost of settling liability claims that fall under our self-insurance retention amount. Any question on that?
So how many firemen do we have left that are on that? Do you know offhand?
You know, I don't know. One of the things that I try to get from CAL FIRE, just to determine how accurate these numbers throughout the, as the amount of unfunded liability, is how many retirees do we have? And what is your expected amount to pay to each individual that adds up to this amount? Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get that, and they simply don't have that information.
Is that the same with the retiree medical also? And that's, you've got the-
Yeah, we know how many we got on the retiree medical. I don't have that number. I know it's over 50 currently receiving that, but we know who is still receiving retiree medical.
And is there a big jump between, what was it, 2005 and then 2010, when we changed the two? Is there a big difference?
So we made some changes in terms of how the benefits vest, right? So in 2004, 2005, what we did is, it used to be, if you come to the city, as long as you have five years in pause, you could actually walk for the city for one day and retire, and you get this full retiree medical. Okay? So what we did back in 2004 is to change that to include a vesting schedule. So in order to get that benefit, if you retire from the city of Norco, you must have at least accumulated 10 years of service, of which at least five of it must be with the city of Norco. So a minimum of five years served with the city of Norco is what is required to get that.
Okay, thank you.
And that benefit, actually, the level of benefits is graduated, so that you start low, and you, an additional percentage, as the number of years you put in is increases.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Andy, on page 113, I'm trying to get more out of my head around FEMA reconciliation to $48,870.
That's a good one between Brian and I. So we submitted some claim way back when, the flood of about two years ago, that's a carryover item. FEMA paid us some money, okay? And I think the amount that is in question was actually for the purchase of Care Rouse, okay, which we submitted, they paid us. Yeah, I believe so, part of that. And they said later on that we overpaid you. We don't think you are entitled to that. We kind of said, no, based on our read of it, we think we are entitled to it. They haven't come back to us, so that, but out of abundance of caution, we're still keeping that amount in the budget should they send us a bill. Yeah. I know.
What happened is the Office of Emergency Services approved it. It went through its review and audit. It was approved. We received the check. And then FEMA later on did another evaluation and said, we don't think that that's, that fund, it should be funded, and asked for us to reimburse them. So we had a process to send appeal, so we did that, and then we've gone back and forth, and they haven't contacted us since. And we're about two years into it.
Right. Any other questions on that? No? Okay. Let's head you.
The details of our department are on pages 115 and 122 of the preliminary budget. For fiscal year 2021, we're seeing a budget of $1.7 million. And as compared to 1920, it is of one point, compared to 1920's budget of $1.5 million. The increase here is mainly due to the increase in selling benefit costs, as well as an increase to our internal service fund charges, mainly our, what we charge sort of to, for our IT. Our funding sources are mainly from the general fund, but we do get funding from our water and sewer, and a small from housing. The services we provide, we have funds, finance director, accounting manager, senior accountant, administrative assistant, six account clerks, and one accounting intern. The services provided is we provide information and support to the city manager and all our other operating departments in order to plan, manage, and maintain the fiscal affairs of the city. This includes budgeting and financial reporting, accounting and financial reporting, municipal services, treasury and cash management, risk and debt service management, and a special district administration. If you guys have any questions?
I do. Maybe not so much a question as a statement, that, and maybe just to forewarn you with the waste management coming up in July, that, and I'm sure you've seen it, that Julie Hauser spends an excessive amount of time dealing with waste management issues and waste management customer service issues that they drop the ball on. So what I like to do is have an idea of going all the way back, I guess, when we had our last waste management hearing in July, let's say of last year, and develop a back charge to waste management for Julie's hours over and above that, where she has to deal with the residents of the city due to waste management's lack of customer service.
So with regards, I don't know about her salary, but we do bill waste management separately for, there is a clause in the contract regarding if items that are not resolved, I believe, within, we do bill for those, a certain, I don't remember right now the percentage of it's a fixed rate, $100. So we do do that as part of the contract.
Can you give us a report on that?
Yes, I will.
In the future?
Yes.
Or forthcoming?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I, you know, I was, I was told I wasn't going to speak, but here I am.
Okay, so basically, for as far as community development, I'll just go straight to the summary. It's basically status quo, same as the last fiscal year, and the funding source is 100% general fund. As far as the services provided by the funding is we have a community development director, senior planner, part-time city planner, two code enforcement officers, two permit technicians, a building inspector and a contract plan check building inspector. Basically, the services that are provided, administration of the city's general plan and zoning regulations, which includes residential, commercial residential land use entitlements, code enforcement and compliance, building permit processing and approval for compliance with city codes and the California Building Code. So that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions?
I have one. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, because Steve- And I don't mean to put you on the spot, because Steve should answer this. I thought when we extended Kathy, it was during mid-budget, Andy. So why, isn't that going to increase their budget for one point?
General plan that is different from this year compared to next, what are the pages again for that? So, if you look at that line item on the community development, that amount was $63,000 last year, and this year is $100,000. In fact, we are not spending that money from last year, it's being carried over because the work hasn't been done. So that's one of the, the reason, actually, that is increasing the budget. If you look at-
Well, I'm looking at it on page 137, and you've got your projected year, $795,000 and some change on your, on your community development. And then for 2021, you've got $897,000. So that's $100,000, that's over $100,000 increase. But you're telling me that you're decreasing that budget, because I'm looking by expenditures.
There are a couple of sections, heartland or divisions that are included here.
And look at, this probably isn't a comment I should be making, but, but look at the 2021, 1920 amended budget, which is 868, which is, as a practical matter, the same as what the proposed budget is. The difference probably is just monies that weren't expended.
Okay, so I see what you're saying. You're, and I'm looking at it because projected year is different than your amended budget for the, well, it's almost the same.
There are some reductions in contractual services compared to last year, plus this-
Okay.
Building department, okay. That is one area where there is a reduction in the-
It's just very unusual to see no change at all. You look for a small percentage increase, so, but okay, thank you, clarified that.
I know, I know, that's so true.
Yeah, I just, one, borrow.
Are we going to break at 6:00? Because we're almost there. I have seven divisions to do.
Do what?
I have seven divisions, so.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of them in here.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Tonight I'm going to present to you the Parks Recreation and then Community Services Budget. The first division is the Recreation Division Budget. And the fiscal year 2021 budget request is nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six twenty-nine. I'm sorry, six sixty-two. That's compared to eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight fifty-nine for the existing fiscal year. Most of this is an increase due to minimum wage as well as salary increases and our retirement and PERS medical increases. This division is funded totally by General Fund. The services provided by, that we provide in this is the Deputy City Manager, Director of Parks and Recreation, Community Services, our Superintendent of Recreation, Community Services, Administrative Clerks, the support costs for part-time city staff, supplies, contractual services, and it also includes our IT charges that are charged back to the The next division that I have is seven thirty-one. And the seven thirty-one division is three hundred and fifteen thousand, two sixty-nine request as compared to three hundred and forty-five, two fifty-eight. A lot of our decrease in this budget is due to lower registrations, due to the COVID-19 pandemic that we're in, where we had to shut facilities down. This funding source is a revenue-based program. Our revenues match to our expenditures. So when our expenditures decrease, we, based on our revenues, we then make the appropriate cuts to balance this budget. This is a thirty-two-hour employee, part-time staff, supplies, rentals, services, and all program costs associated to running this program are part of that budget. Just to let you know, on the revenue side, this budget will hit balances also in our budget request for next year. Our challenge a little bit in this budget, and as I talk a little bit about Recreation, Community Services, and activities, is I don't know when we're going to reopen. I don't know, so it's sort of a guessing game. Staff is pre-planning to restart, and if we get an opportunity to restart in portions, then we will do that and start bringing programs and services. So I think, as Andy said a little bit, some of what we're looking at numbers-wise is our best guesstimates. So this is our best guesstimates here, and we'll probably be making mid-year adjustments based on activity when we get to that part of next year's fiscal year budget. The next division is the Parks Maintenance Budget. The twenty, twenty-one budget request is eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, two sixty-six compared to our existing eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, one seventy-two. As you see, we're actually have a decrease in this year's budget, and that's based on our utilities, our utility, or that differential is really based on our utilities. We're estimating our utilities come in less. This is a General Fund subsidized budget. This deals with all the public parks and facility superintendent. Half of his time is in this division. Also, one part-time staff person is in this division, and that is a twenty-hour part-time person. The next division is Youth and Teens. Sure. So in this budget, we have contract services that result with our annual, annual contract with Brightview Landscaping. We have an extension in the contract that is coming up for this upcoming fiscal year. We have an opportunity to extend that contract, or they can continue to go into the, another year, or actually have a two-year option. Or we would have to then go out and recirculate a bid for operations. Based on my evaluations related to the contract services in here, we would see a significant increase based on what our square footage price is today. So we're currently working with Brightview to discuss some of the amendments to this contract, which we will be bringing back to you in a supplemental at our next workshop, but that isn't a discussion point. I truly believe, looking at this and evaluating this with the superintendent, our numbers would go up. And the same thing would apply if we were to look at the Landscape Maintenance Districts, where we'll bring that budget to you, too. The square footage price, particularly for trail maintenance, for what we pay, is significantly different than what the market is right now to pay. So I think it's prudent for us, for at least this next year, to negotiate an extension, which the contract does allow, and then continue to push for performance. I'll admit, I haven't been totally satisfied with performance, and we have done some deducts with them into this fiscal year, and we will continue for them to produce what is in the contract minus the amendments we'll look at in next, next year's budget. So, and one of their big issues that they say is what we did in this original contract for trail maintenance is, is nowhere where it would be in cost. A lot of their costs are resulting in costs for salaries and that type of thing is where the big part of their costs have gone. So those are some of the things that we're in discussions with them right now on. And a big part of this budget for park maintenance is the contract services.
Brian? What do we pay presently per square foot on trail maintenance, and what is the market rate?
Point zero, zero, nine, five. So that is nine tenths of a penny. So even with the CPI increase that they're entitled to, to put it around a penny a square foot, I think Chad's contract right now is ten cents a square foot. And that is, that is a one-time shot, is that not correct? That is not ongoing maintenance.
And you would say the mark, the market, today, if we don't do that extension, the market today would?
Would probably increase about ten times to go out to bid on.
That's on the measure our trail maintenance.
Right.
Correct.
We look at that as a comparison, and to per our specs, what's required out of them, and we need to make some adjustments in there because there's, there's a reality of what the contract says, and then over time, what is really feasible to do. So some negotiated increases to keep that, at least maintain that standard, is reasonable after a long-term contract, as long as they'll perform.
Now, does that point zero, zero, nine, five also include the LMDs?
Yes.
And sandbagging during the rainy season and all of that?
And immediately repairing every driveway after a rainstorm. If, to, to bring that service in, which is different than what the ten cents a square foot is, we'd probably be looking at a higher square footage price, even higher than that. And so, and that, the districts are a little different because you have a lot of steep areas, more so than other parts that are more flat. So that is a challenge. So I think it's, in time with Andy, I felt it was most prudent to try and come to a reasonable adjustment, which I think we're very close to doing, and make them hold the line on some things. Otherwise, the cost for this contract will go up significantly.
Thank you.
Question real quick. Brian, what's the, the date of this contract, Andy?
It, it actually, it's, it actually, at the end of five years, which would be June thirty, it has an automatic extension for two years, or two one-year extensions, if we agree.
So either?
Fires the city manager to extend their contract. So it's really a seven-year agreement.
Okay, so that doesn't come back to us strictly as a city manager?
No, city manager has a right to do it, but we're going to bring it back to you because there's going to be an increase.
That's fine, I just, just, I'm just trying to get the dates and to firm out it, because I agree with you. Don't get me wrong, they're out there, they're busting their butt, but I have issues, performance issues.
Yeah, and they've been clearly identified, and, and they've gone through some changes organizationally, not to make excuses for them, that has changed. Now, they have a new manager in this area. They, they've done some changes that we've seen some positives from. It's just, it needs to move faster, in my opinion, and that's what we're pushing for. So.
Thank you.
The next operating budget is Senior Services. The Senior Service Budget is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars compared to three ninety-eight, eight oh six. The decrease in this budget is due to no purchase of capital equipment. In our previous fiscal year budget, we actually had, we replaced ADA doors in the front, and we had some other capital improvement programs in there. If you recall, we had a water leak that we had to adjust the budget at mid-year, and all of those things were done. They're not projected in the next fiscal year. Also, moving expenses and revenues from Party Partners, Newman Trust, and the CDBG into their own budget. So you see a decrease. We used to budget in this line item, and now we've moved them into their own operating areas for budget. With the Newman Trust, which is what's paying for Party Partners, it's just simpler from an accounting and practice, is to keep that in a separate fund to its expenditure. So those have been adjusted. Our fund source is General Fund here. We do receive Measure A, A grant, which was identified earlier in LaSette's presentation, and we receive a Measure A grant match is what our contribution is. And then the Newman Trust Party Partners Program for the upcoming fiscal year is forty-five thousand, nine, nine, nine. The Community Development Grant, this is CDBG funds, this helps fund some, one of our part-time persons at the Senior Center, and that's twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. These services provide, our community services supervisor oversees our senior services, youth services, sports and development challenge programs, bus driver, part-time staff, supplies, rentals, services, and IT charges that are associated to the division, contractual services and vehicle charges, and our bus driver, we have one, one full-time bus driver and one part-time bus driver, and that's all part of the Senior Services Budget. Building Maintenance, Building Maintenance for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, this is the largest budget in all of the divisions, and basically, we are looking at a one-point two million dollar budget compared to one-point one-six million this last year. Increases in budget are due to salary increases or minimum wage increases, merit increases over time associated with employee benefits, equipment rental, state mandated crowd control trainings. Recently, we were told that in some of our training costs, any large event, we must have all staff trained in crowd control trainings. And actually, the fire department checks on those certificates to make sure that has happened, and we are starting to implement that process now with some of our staff. Some will be coming up in next year. As a side note to that, we'll be working with some of our organizational groups who also need to complete this crowd control training process, and that is a state mandate. Buildings and grounds, contractual services, capital equipment purchase, and then, and obviously, we have internal ID charges that are associated to this. This is funded through the General Fund. I do want to make a note, though, the Building, Operating, and Service Maintenance Division incorporates everything in the city. It, it isn't just Parks and Recreation facilities. This includes both fire stations, this includes also the sheriff's station, City Hall, all of the buildings that are publicly owned. So this division really incorporates all of those, and some of the utility charges that are associated with those, those different operations and facilities. Services provided by this funding are Parks and Facility Superintendent, fifty percent of his time is in there, Community Services Supervisor, and two-part, two-part maintenance employees, part-time, and the Community Services Supervisor is our supervisor who oversees Ingalls Park, that would be Patty. And then our park maintenance employees, we have two park maintenance employees full-time, and they are assigned to George Ingalls Equestrian Events Center. Also understand that the George Ingalls Equestrian Events Center makes up half, a little bit of half, or a little less than half of this overall budget. So just so you understand, Ingalls is part of this budget overall. And then we have operation maintenance, and we have, in this division, there are two twenty-hour people assigned to handle any work orders or building facility operations. And that's something we're going to be coming back to discuss with you related to organization in a few, in our next workshop. And so this particular division is really, anything that is of a public facility is, is maintained into this division.
So with, let's say, measure our improvements to building facilities, whether it's, you know, air conditioning units or repair to leaky roofs and things like that, long-term, would we, with those improvements, would we not also see a reduction in labor costs and utility costs?
We, where I would see, where we might see, Councilman, where I would see that is maybe in contractual services for like HAVC systems. Yeah. Once we get the new systems in, which are, were actually already to bid, that project, I could see, seeing a significant increase, and I would say probably for the last five years, that has added somewhere between thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year in increases to our budget, just to maintain AC units throughout the city. I do want to note that in some of our utilities, we noticed a decline in cost, and we really believe that's due to the new AC units that are?
Oh, absolutely.
And so that, I do see that there could be some adjustments there. How much of an impact, I don't know at this point in time. But this is a division that is, is unique in the sense that one day, everything may look great, and all of a sudden, you have a toilet backing up, and you find out that you have an old clay pipe, that it, you got to dig it up all the way to replace it. So this, it's one of those divisions that it changes, and there are some things. One of the things we're looking at is also trying to get better service maintenance contracts that are consistent for a number of years. For example, one of the things that we've looked at, and, and I, and this is talking with fire personnel and sheriffs, is getting to a service contract that is for a two-year contract to deal with our gate operation maintenance, door operation maintenance, and those things, because I think we get a better price point when we do new that. And, and the problem, too, is a lot, for a long time, we didn't service things until it broke, and you just can't continue it. And the, most recently, air compressors, and so I need to add that, that was one of, oh, I never anticipated that one, and I had an air compressor go bad at the Station Forty-seven. So we're making those type of adjustments, and having that allocated into our service agreements, I think will help us a little bit in bringing costs down overall. Animal Control Budget, the budget for animal control is seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, it's compared to six ninety-nine. Mainly, budget is due to minimum wage increases, and as you know, we move into the next year, we're going to start to see, there's a big spike in minimum wage increase. When we do that, that also affects some of what we call compression to some of our more skilled part-time staff, so we have to make those adjustments along with that as well. Increases in staffing due to safety measures and uniform cost. The, we're taking a, with, since this COVID-19, we've taken a bigger stance on trying to make sure our people are outfitted or we have those supplies in stock. Particularly in this area, our PPEs, we have the ability to go to a full suit PPE, to just the mask, to gloves, and all of those things. So we try to operate this in that fashion. Services provided, we have our Superintendent of Animal Control, and we have our Senior Officer, and we have one thirty-two Animal Control Officer, and then we have a trainee, and then we have part-time support that deals with kennels, office, and maintenance and operation. And one of the things that we identified in here is the purchase of, we have two vehicles coming up also for replacement, and a horse trailer. So as you may have remembered, earlier in the fiscal year, we had a horse trailer stolen from Ingalls, and this is to replace that unit. And that concludes the vision operations.
Was that, the trailer they stole, that was the best one we had, right?
Yeah. The other one's a little bit older and run down.
Right. Okay.
But we actually maintain two. We will roll with those units if we need to with NART, but they're also for us to use for a number of situations or call-outs that animal control do escape, especially with dealing with large livestock in our community.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Brian, on that horse trailer, maybe the lieutenant, we never got anything back. Okay.
No. I don't know where it went, but yeah.
And I'm not trying to, but we hope we've established better protocols on the safety up there.
And I'll just go back, I think, oh, I did that wrong way.
That's fine, you can.
The one thing I would like to, the, the seven thirty-seven, which is our Building Operation Maintenance, which includes Ingalls, also remember at mid-year, we adjusted for a part of the year for security services. We then added the balance of the fiscal year going into this next year. Since I've added security services up there, I have had zero incidences. And so we are, that is a vulnerable area where, because of the way it's placed, but I have to say that probably all in all, having that securities in place has probably saved us from either vandalism or theft or other things.
I have a question. First off, the, the jump up to a dollar an hour, the governor today said he's not going to back off that. I guess there's a lot of petitioning to have him not jack that up.
It's going to affect all these businesses who are just having a hard time.
But, no offense, Governor, but you're nuts. But if it does back off, then you'll adjust that, I'm assuming. One of the things that down the line, and Brian and I just talked about this, is that I'm just wondering if at some point, we need to split Parks and Recreation from buildings and maybe even animal control. The only reason I say that is because right now, we have Brian, who's able to juggle all those balls, but at some point, that's really something that traditionally is not how it's done in other cities. We, we may have trouble replicating him, and it might be something that we might want to think about as we do our succession planning out of or into the next generation, just a comment. Anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. I missed one of my slides. I was going to do public works for you. There we go. Okay, so I need to go backwards. There we go. Special Events is another area of operation. In this budget, we acute for all departments that would have costs associated into Special Events. So public, when we do a, a parade, and it's, if it's in this budget, the cost associated to public works is charged back into this particular division. So the budget is one hundred and thirteen thousand, five seventy-three going into next fiscal year compared to one hundred and one, and again, we have increases in budget due to minimum wage increases, associated benefit supplies, and increases that we anticipate in contract services. This is General Fund, donation grant sponsors, we do ticket sales to help offset special events as well. A lot of the special events provided are, include our Easter egg hunt, Rose M. Eldridge Day, concerts in the park, the Fourth of July, our Day of the Cowboy Event, Patriot Day, Labor Day Parade, Horse Week Parade, Breakfast with Santa, Christmas Festival Parade of Lights, and Veterans Events. The challenge here is going into the fiscal year end with us having to suspend some of these activities, that's why you see a reduction in some costs. However, going in, we don't know. But I'm going in, and I was on our Operational Area Conference Call today, and Riverside had a spike in the number of desks within the county in the last seven days. So that they cannot, we were moving along, and it seems like that may have pushed us back a little bit. They cannot give a reading when they're going to start freeing up or when, when we go to what we call Stage Two Acceleration. So a lot of these events fall under the, the governor's order for gathering and stay at home, so it's really hard to predict that. So what staff has tried to do with running these special events is we're trying to do virtual events. I have to say thank you, everyone, for participating in the recent, our virtual Memorial Day Event, which will be shown coming up on Memorial Day. But some of these events, so we've even looked at Fourth of July, which we've always done a community picnic and stuff like that, it doesn't fall really into the criteria. However, we believe that based on the order, that we think a ride that is done properly could still do the traditional marriage ride. If people want to go into our parks and lay a blanket down and have a picnic, that's okay, especially if they're in the same family group. It's when you have gatherings that you're bringing different groups together in one location. So this is kind of a challenging budget, and we will be evaluating and looking at that as well as moving into mid-year budget and next fiscal year as well, so there may be some adjustments. Part of the discussions, because a lot of these different special events, we have community participation from a committee standpoint. So some of the things we've talked about is maybe pushing it out, or adjusting it and doing different things. So that's part of the, the work in progress here as well. So that is the Special Events Budget as it stands right now. And as you know, some of our large events that we've had for years and years, from Horse Week to the Posse Rodeo, to also the fair, have all counseled, and that also adjusts our revenue on the other side. But more importantly, those are very traditional events, so it's hard when you have to start doing something that people have gotten used to. So how do you try to adjust that and do it? I do have to say, we did do an Easter egg hunt. The bunny was awesome. I don't know if you guys saw the bunny online, but it was awesome, and it was very, it was actually very well received by our, number of hits we got, and as, and from the community. So staff is diligently trying to look at how So staff is diligently trying to look at how we can still bring some of these events, maybe modify them, so, and meet what the criteria is. I was really looking at going into the end of May and June, really seeing some things that we're going to move into what I call stage-two acceleration, and then jump into three. And I see, it looks like it slowed down a little bit, that movement. But I see a lot of cities who are doing the same thing we are, is how can we modify this, these activities to bring it back to the public, maybe in some form or fashion. So we are working on that.
Quick question for you, Brian. If for some reason we were given the green light tomorrow, that orders were lifted, how long would it take your department to get parks reopened and just get things back to normal for folks?
Great question. We actually have prepared, I'm in the review of drafts, of actually implementing and bringing things back. Andy has asked us all to look at, you know, restart Norco, and so in that plan, we are looking at every facility and every division, how that would happen. In some cases, like on the special events process, our problem is a lot of them are funded by sponsorships. That's going to be a challenge unless we decide we want to subsidize that. Otherwise, what would end up happening is we would try to push that out further and readjust those days. A big one is our concerts in the park, and it just, the sponsors are just not going to give it right now, and it's kind of hard to even ask for it. So what we're looking at is maybe there's some modifications, or if things were to light up, maybe we do a large community concert at the end of the summer or do something like that. So we are preparing to open. I do think that that will happen in some stages. One, the senior center, I think, may be a little bit lagging in other facilities, just because we have an at-risk population there. But I do see that we are moving really well, and I think that we will start to see things. I think by summer, I really want to say in June, if things can get better from a number standpoint, if you didn't know, there was this guideline or rule by the state, one for every 14 people, that has now been amended and that order has been rescinded. So now the order is that it's 7.6 for a week of, meaning, so they changed it and gotten more flexible with it. But the spike went to 9.6 in the last seven days. So that adjusts the thought process of when can you start letting things release. So they're waiting along, and what they said is give it another week. That may have been just more of a fluke, because we are doing more testing in Riverside County right now than almost all over the state. And so we're one of the leading counties right now doing number of tests. So I see that that has probably driven those numbers, but then that may change real quickly here, and particularly as we move to warm weather. So to really answer your question, we're preparing to turn the afterburners on and get started right away. I've got a bunch of kids who want to go play basketball and do all kinds of stuff.
Right, and so I think that was more my question. If they said today, how long would it be before our parks and the play equipment was open for kids and families to enjoy? Is that, you could do it tomorrow, or you need two to three days to put like a hoop back up on the backboard or that kind of stuff?
I would say we would probably look at, probably, it would be a week to two weeks to start really doing it, because there's some things I would do just to be mitigating. I'd probably do a whole disinfection of all playgrounds and things like that. I'd redo all my surfaces and re-fluff them and get them, things, bathrooms, I would desanitize and do everything to be open and that. My problem will be is that they say, yeah, go open up. Are there any restrictions that I have to add in there? And that changes the situation in a park. If I had to go do like a porter service where I have to clean every hour of bathrooms and stuff. So those are the unknowns, I don't know. But in talking with staff, we feel that, you know, within a week to two weeks, we could be operational in a lot of our facilities, particularly the parks, I think we can bring back pretty fast. It's going to be the activities that are actually, Little League and Girls softball, baseball. So I just want to let you know that we've met with U.S. Sports Advisory Council, and staff is working with them on a plan. Even, we've been doing some reviews of other plans that are out there. For the day when they say go, we can implement that and maintain social distancing, maybe parents have to drop off, come back. So we're looking at all of those options so that we're ready to go when the light comes on.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I think this will be a good time to stop and pick up the next time. We have 30 minutes. I think you guys want to get breakfast, not breakfast, it sounds like it's breakfast time. You want to get some dinner, and then we can go into the regular city council meeting, if you don't... Oh, yeah. So next time, we're going to, we'll finish this operating budget discussion and then move into the CIP. A couple of things I do want to bring to your attention, this is what comes out of the fact that we are streaming this live, so employees that are not here, they are actually watching. They've, it sent me some information with respect to the number of current retirees that are currently receiving benefits. Obviously, it's gone up quite a bit. We have 82. I think I said it was in the high 50s, but that's the number. And with respect to the amount, our current balance in the trust account we established is about $9 million right now, obviously with, as of March 31st. And that's certainly because of the massive sell-off we saw in the stock market. By now, I'm sure we've recovered most of that losses.
Okay, we will adjourn this, go have our dinner, and we'll come back sharply at 7 o'clock, so gobble it down.